The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of August 27, 2025 is now called to order. I will now call the roll. Commissioners, please state here when your name is called. Commissioner Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Raspy?
Here.
Commissioner Barnett?
Here.
Commissioner Sordi?
Here.
And I am here as well. Please note for the record that Vice Chair Birch and Commissioner Stump are not present. Please stand if you are able as Commissioner Sordi leads us in the pledge.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the Planning Commission conducts the meeting this evening, we encourage active participation by the public. The public can participate in several ways. Prior to a meeting, written comments about agenda items may be submitted to staff. During the meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. First, during the verbal communications period, any individual may speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. Second, during the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, any member of the public may speak about an agenda item. You will be advised of the times when you speak, when to speak on these, each of these items. If you wish to address the commission tonight during the verbal communications portion or a public hearing agenda item, please raise your hand on Zoom or for those here in person, complete a speaker card and give it to a staff member. Please print your name with phonetic spelling, or if you are speaking anonymously, you may write down your initials. When you are called to speak, please come up to the podium and speak directly into the microphone as this meeting is being recorded. State your name and address for the record or indicate you are speaking anonymously. You will have three minutes. We will now begin with the verbal communications portion of the meeting, during which members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue that is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Staff will announce when your three-minute time limit is up. I don't have any speaker cards. Are there any hands raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Next, we will be moving on to the consent calendar. The, tonight, we have one item on the consent calendar being the approval of the draft minutes of the August 13, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the commission or public may request that this item be removed. Are there any such requests? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Commissioner Barnett?
There you go.
Sorry.
So moved.
Here.
Second? Okay. And thank you, Commissioner Raspy. Any discussion? Seeing none, now I will call the ask, question, ask for a show of hands for all those in favor of the motion. And it passes unanimously. We will now move on to our public hearings, starting with item number two. Item two is to consider a request for approval to modify Plan Development Ordinance 2025 to allow modifications to Building E, an architecture and site application for exterior modifications to an existing commercial building in the University Edelen Historic District, and a conditional use permit for formula retail over 10,000 square feet and for a restaurant with alcohol service on property zoned C-APN 529-02-044, Plan Development Modification Application PD-25-001, Architecture and Site Application S-25-004, and Conditional Use Permit Application U-25-001. Categorically exempt pursuant to Secua Guidelines, Section 15301, Existing Facilities. Property owner is SRI Oldtown LLC. The applicant is Rick Nelson, MBH Architects, and the project planner is Aaron Walters. So first, we will, before the staff report, may I have a show of hands of commissioners that visited the property and all, okay, all of us? And are there any disclosures that we need to make? No? Okay. Mr. Mullen, will you be presenting the staff report this evening? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. The project for you this evening is composed of several applications, an amendment to the Governing Planned Development Ordinance, an architecture and site application for exterior modifications, and a conditional use permit for a formula retail business greater than 10,000 square feet and a restaurant with alcohol service. The existing PD ordinance governing Old Town was adopted in 1996. It includes specific performance standards for the subject building E. The applicant proposes amendments to the PD to eliminate the requirements that building E be designed so that it appears to be a collective of individual structures that abut each other. The applicant requests these changes to allow for a more cohesive and contextually appropriate facade as discussed in the staff report and the applicant's letter of justification. Regarding the architecture and site application, the applicant proposes exterior modifications to building E to establish a cohesive Mediterranean-style architectural character for a new single-tenant occupancy. All four elevations of the building would be modified. The design incorporates step acts at the ground level along the street-facing facades, alternating rectangular and semicircular fenestration, and includes a varied parapet line at the roof. The proposed windows have deep recesses for shadow lines, and the design involve, includes louvered and fabric awnings which add texture and depth to the new facade. The project proposes a centrally located restaurant which would be illuminated by a new skylight, bringing natural light into the interior space. Exterior finish materials include a multi-coat cement plaster finish accented with decorative steel and aluminum architectural elements and architectural aluminum windows. Sidewalk replacement and removal of two trees is also included with the proposal. As detailed in the staff report, the Historic Preservation Committee considered the exterior design modifications and the proposed PD amendments that would allow for those modifications. The HPC was ultimately unable to support the, these aspects of the project and forwarded a recommendation of denial to the Planning Commission. The proposed project also includes a conditional use permit for a formula retail establishment exceeding 10,000 square feet, which will include the sale of home furnishings, interior design services, and an integrated restaurant. The restaurant component will offer onsite alcohol service and is designed to be complimentary to the retail experience within the same space. When reviewing a CUP, the commission should consider the information in the applicant's business plan. However, the key consideration should be the proposed use, since the business plan can change from owner to owner. The CUP runs at the land, and the commission should review the application based on the use described in the recommended CUP in Exhibit 6 as opposed to the applicant's business plan. An addendum and desk item were distributed ahead of tonight's hearing with additional public comments received after publishing the staff report. As discussed in the staff report, staff recommends denial of the application reflecting the recommendation provided by the HPC. Your staff report includes alternatives to this recommendation, including approval, approval with modifications and continuation. Planning, engineering, and economic vitality staff are on hand this evening to support your discussion, and that concludes my staff's presentation.
And thank you. To the chair, just wanted to add an update related to the recommendation for the conditional use permit. We should have, in hindsight, probably split that out separately because the CUP is not the purview of the Historic Preservation Committee. So we've reevaluated that analysis, and so we are modifying our recommendation for the conditional use permit to ask the Planning Commission or recommend to the Planning Commission that they recommend approval of the CUP as we move forward through the process.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any additional, or any questions for staff at this time? We will now open the public portion of the public hearing on item two and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. So I have a card for Gary Friedman. Great, thank you. I understand that you will be splitting your time, so if you could just introduce yourself. And you have five minutes. Oh, you weren't. Okay.
Okay, great. I'm going to be changing the slide. They're asking somebody to change. Fantastic. First, thank you for having us here, Commission. I'm Gary Friedman. I'm the chairman and chief executive officer of RH. I have been at the company now 25 years. Proud to have opened our gallery that's up here just behind the location that we're, we're presenting and where we've been a, we believe, an active member of the community now for 15 years. So let me start with, maybe if we can go to the first slide. So I'm going to spend a little bit, Jordan, this isn't changing here. One second.
There we go.
Okay, good. Okay, just a few minutes on kind of who we are. RH is the leading luxury home furnishings brand in North America. We do about $3.6 billion in sales, not just in North America today, but we also are a global organization. We're opening across Europe and the UK. We're best known for creating the most compelling collection of luxury home furnishings, presented in the most inspiring spaces in the world. We say we are obsessed. We can turn the next slide. Thank you. Next slide. Yeah, thanks. We say we're obsessed with great architecture. We either find it and readapt it, or we build it. Spaces that are a reflection of human design, a study of balance, symmetry, and perfect proportions. Our design ethos in our company dates all the way back to the first century B.C. and to Marcus Vitruvius, who is the author of the Ten Books on Architecture, Architectura. Vitruvius's principles inspired Leonardo da Vinci's sketch here, world-famous sketch of the Vitruvian Man 1,500 years after his death. So we're very deep thinkers about what we do and the buildings we inhabit and the investments we make to create great architectural experiences for the public. If we go to the next slide. We say we don't build retail stores. We build inspiring spaces. Spaces that blur the lines between residential and retail, indoors and outdoors, home and hospitality. Spaces that activate all of the senses and spaces that cannot be replicated online. If you think about it, most retail stores are somewhat archaic, windowless boxes that lack any sense of humanity. There's usually no natural light, no fresh air. Plants die in department, in department stores, or most retail stores, and they can't be very good for humans either. And that's why we take a different view of that. Next slide, please. A few examples of some of our work. This is a compound we built in the town of Yountville, California. I remember when we first were pursuing this, everybody said that a branded store won't be allowed north of the city of Napa. It never has been. We presented to the council up there that we don't build retail stores, and in, what we try to do is conform to any, conform and elevate any environment that we go into. So we aggregated a historic building here, another property, and we built a five-building compound that we said was an integration of food, wine, art, and design. And it was an integration of food, wine, art, and design because that's what the Napa Valley was about first and primarily. So we have a design aspect to the, to the business, but it's after the food and wine aspect. Here, you can see the inside of the restaurant we built. It won't be too unlike what we would do here, where we have trees, light coming through with the glass roof, fountains, and so on and so forth. So they're not typical restaurants. This is the building, the historic building that we completely readapted. We have outdoor living rooms for wine tasting. This is the inside of it. We created a two-level space again to integrate with wine and food. This is a project that we just finished last year. Next slide, please. Thank you. This was a historic firehouse in Montecito, California. And it was a, you know, highly aware group of like what we were going to do with it, and we brought it back to life and reimagined it as a beautiful, integrated space with not only a store but hospitality. This is looking down through the space, and we built a beautiful indoor-outdoor courtyard restaurant. This was a historic building that was vacant for about 35 years, I believe, in San Francisco in the Dog Patch. This is this historic Bethlehem Steel Building that we reimagined into a gallery space and a restaurant. Here, you can see the interior space of a restaurant with natural light. This is a 17th-century, 73-acre estate in the English countryside. This is RH England. We reimagined this into a retail gallery, an architecture and design library, three retail spaces. Am I, am I done?
Yes, that was your five minutes. However, you will be, you will have an additional three minutes at the end. And before you leave, we, commissioners, may have questions. Are there any questions for the speaker at this time? No? Oh, yes. Commissioner Barnett?
Thank you for your presentation, sir. So as I understand it, the Historical Preservation Committee was most concerned with the lack of, what they thought was an existing illusion of different buildings as contributing to the historic district. And I, I know that that was something that was not accepted by your company, and I guess the question is, why not?
Could, can I show the one slide of the existing conditions so we can look at it? If you can just go forward a few slides here. Just click forward. You'll get, there we go. So it's right here. One, I'd say, I'd start with, what are we looking at today? I mean, from our point of view, it's kind of a cacophony of a single building. Like, I'd call it an albatross. You've got, you know, all kinds of different colors, different materials. And it's clearly that there's nothing historic here. You know, so to me, this is bad architecture. This is something that renders the neighborhood less valuable. And so, you know, we're pretty firm in our principles about what we do and what we don't do, but we don't do bad architecture. And trying to kind of take this building and create multiple-looking facades that aren't even real, you know, I'm, honestly, I'm a little surprised that it even comes under historic review. I mean, this building, you know, it's, it's not a well-built building. It's not a good-looking building. So, you know, we're here to do something spectacular.
Okay, I understand your point. Thank you for that.
Yeah, you know, that's why I say we,
Thank you.
You know, we believe in great architecture.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for the speaker at this time? Okay. Thank you. We will now, I now invite comments from members of the public. If you have not already turned in your speaker card to staff, please do so at this time. And/or raise your hand on Zoom. I have a number of cards. So first, I have Jennifer Lynn.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I am Jennifer Lynn, CEO of the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce. I am here to express the chamber's strong support for the proposed RH Gallery and Restaurant. Our support rests on four pillars that reflect our mission of driving businesses forward and championing a thriving community. First, durable economic impact. The RH flagship concept consistently generates millions in sales. This activity means stable sales tax revenue and steady foot traffic, benefits that ripple across our small-business community year-round. Second, balance in our retail ecosystem. A thriving economy isn't about one type of business. It's about balance. According to the U.S. Chamber of Commerce and confirmed by our own local experience, thoughtfully selected anchors like RH serve as regional magnets. Hospitality, retail, and dining anchors bring more people into the area who then discover and support our locally-owned businesses. Third, place-making at a dormant corner. Since the Gap vacated nearly three years ago, this prime location has been underutilized. RH transforms it into an all-day destination from brunch through dinner, bringing renewed energy into the street and a dynamic presence. Fourth, brand elevation and a defining opportunity. Los Gatos is already recognized for retail, design, and culinary experiences. A flagship RH further elevates that identity and shares it with a wider audience. This project is a vote of confidence in our community's future. RH's leadership has already reached out to our chamber, asking how they can support our small-business community, a clear signal of partnership. And anchor businesses like this one also bring quality jobs and supplier relationships, further strengthening the local economy. I also want to address concerns that the RH Gallery and Restaurant could feel big, but please note that it fits comfortably within the existing building's footprint. There's no added stories. There's no expansion of borders. What's proposed is an elegant Mediterranean-inspired design, a refined architectural refresh. Greenery and design details will add interest, texture, and dimension to the facade. In Los Gatos, harmony does not mean sameness. It means thoughtful design that complements historic charm. The three façade requirement made sense when multiple tenants occupied the building. Today, a unified, sophisticated facade is not only appropriate for one tenant, it also enhances our character and reflects our identity as both timeless and forward-thinking. In short, this project creates a vibrant corner, strengthens our tax base, reinforces Los Gatos's identity as a destination, and delivers broad benefits to small businesses through increased visibility, jobs, and customer traffic. This is a rare and pivotal opportunity, one that deserves thoughtful consideration. On behalf of the chamber, I urge you to recommend approval of the PD modification.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Next, I have Ryan Rosenberg.
Okay, I'd like to start by thanking this entire commission for all the great work that you guys do for our town. And in reward of that, I'll be really quick. I'm in favor of this. There's three reasons. The first reason is I like the idea of two-for-one. I want to, we want a vibrant downtown. That's what we're going for. And here, you got an opportunity to have both retail as well as restaurant. I've been to the other RHs. They're really nice, and they do actually elevate the town. They even elevate a place like Yountville. It's really, it's really impressive. The other thing is, I did, I do get what people are saying about this facade being kind of samey. But if you just turn around and look the other direction, it's actually even a little more detailed than what you see in Old Town. Right? Old Town's pretty samey already. So I don't think that it will transform in a negative way that area. In fact, I think it will make it look nicer. That's my opinion. So I think it'll make the town more vibrant. I think it's a great destination, and I think that it will, it should fit. And the last thing I'll add is, I think there's some chance that we might get a little bit of, a little corridor there. You've got two significant furniture stores next to each other, creating a little bit more of destination. And I think people go to one, they go to another, making our town more active. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Next, I have Taylor Burke.
Hi, thank you for having me. This is my first time doing one of these, so, yeah. So mine will be a little bit more, I think, personal or family-oriented. I have a mom. My husband's also here. We have three kids, and buying a house in Los Gatos beginning of COVID was a big stretch for us. But we bought it because we wanted to give our kids the best resources and community in the area. We, we grew up here, but we also spent 11 years in New York. And what you find when you're in New York is that the neighborhoods and the walkability become your family and become your community. So having a destination like this, where you can walk downtown and socialize and sit at a big table with other people is so important, and I think it lacks a little bit here. Just this week, my kids go to, or two of them go to Dave's Avenue, and we're playing, or planning a mom's night out with the second-grade moms. You can imagine all the text chains that are going on. Lots of options were thrown out, only one of which is in Los Gatos. So we're probably going to end up at Flowers or in Palo Alto, and that's not where we want to be. We want to be able to walk downtown and run into people that we know and just have our kids play and play with kids. My sister's kids go to Van Meter. And so it's so fun to have places where you can gather a big group and just develop that kinship and the investment in the community. Not to mention, I bring up Dave's, but our waitlist is huge. I'm, I don't know if those are things that you guys get, or, but our, our neighbors bought a $6.5 million house last year, and their kids are on the waitlist for a public school that's a quarter of a mile from, from where we live. So it's kind of shocking, and I just think that, you know, from an economic perspective, and I'm not your economic girl, but I just think that it's a, could have a huge impact on our parks and our public schools. I think that's all.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? No. Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker I have is Pete Burke. And if I could just ask you to state your name for the record. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Peter Burke, local here of Los Gatos, Slavon Rose Avenue. My wife, Taylor, just spoke. We have three kids, Dave's Avenue. I am in favor of this project for four specific reasons, and I think Gary outlined it very nicely, right? We have visibly enhance, right? That's through the beautiful architecture, drive revenue for the community, that culinary experience that my wife mentioned that we're lacking. Just the other week, I worked for the world's largest CRM company, and I had a number of executives come down to lunch and ended up going to Telferique across the street. But really, that was my only option outside of Diodeca in terms of a quality, high-end restaurant. That was open during lunch, so Diodeca was out, right? I think that is a great opportunity for us and also a great opportunity for that customer traffic that Jenny alluded to, and not only driving people to obviously seek a great location like Restoration Hardware Eatery and an experience, but also drive it for the local business. So again, very much in favor of this project, and would like to see it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Next, I have Maria Garcia. Apologies if I pronounced your name incorrectly.
Hi, I'm Maria Gerst, and I'm a resident of Los Gatos. I want to thank you guys for what you do and for hearing me speak today. I'm here also in support of Restoration Hardware. I'm not quite sure why the building that's currently there is considered historic, but I have been, I'm a native Californian, and I've been coming to Los Gatos since the late '70s, and I can tell you I've seen a lot of change. And I, you know, some of it good, some of it bad. I think this is definitely something good, as we need to evolve. If you look at where all the Restoration Hardwares are placed, they are in prominent areas, and I think we should consider ourselves kind of, you know, lucky that we've been considered as one of those places, because they are destination spots. I have been to many of them in California. I frequent the one in Palo Alto, because I enjoy the overall vibrancy, and it is a destination place. There are lots of people there at lunchtime, there's lots of people there in the evening. I love downtown Los Gatos. I frequent downtown Los Gatos. I'm at the coffee shop all the time, and I'm also at Teleferic, and I'm at The Cellar. And even if you aren't eating at Restoration Hardware, you will be able to enjoy the beautiful views it'll give you when you're at either of those places dining out. I think it's going to complete and enhance and elevate our downtown area over there. And I would love to see the space that is currently not being used to be used quickly, to have something in there to retain its vibrancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Next, I have Annette Badger.
Good evening. I'm Annette Badger. I'm the Director of Construction and Tenant Services for Federal Realty. We are the owners of Old Town and also Santana Row, some of you may know. And I would like to say that I'm in favor of the modification of the plan development for several reasons, many of which have been already stated. Not only for the economic growth, as Jennifer mentioned, increasing sales tax, increasing jobs, but it's going to bring world-class architecture to this town, as Gary mentioned. And it will enhance the already beautiful architecture that you have here. They have renovated, RH has renovated many historical buildings over the years, so they really know what they're doing in a community. Their grand and classical architecture will just do an excellent job of integrating into the setting and the surrounding community. So having RH here will certainly elevate our shopping center, but more importantly, I believe it will elevate and complement Los Gatos. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you for your comments. Next, I have Scott Valley.
Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing this item tonight. My name is Scott Valley. I actually am Head of Development for Federal Realty for the West Coast. As Annette had said, we own Old Town, Santana Row, and Westgate in this area. We think we've been a very strong partner in Los Gatos, both for the town, with the events we hold, and with the other businesses around us. We spend a lot of time and money curating the type of people. We heard a person earlier talk about Teleferic. That took a long time to find that, and now it's packed every single night. Our House is another great addition. The Warby Parkers, the Salt and Straws. We believe that bringing Restoration Hardware is as good or better than even adding those. We believe it's going to be a destination for both Old Town and for Los Gatos, and we appreciate any kind of support we could get on this topic tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Next, I have Christian Erwin.
Thank you for hearing this matter, and thank you for having me. My name's Christian Erwin. I'm the Vice President of Leasing for Federal Realty, and I'm excited to be here. I think the rest of the speakers have done a good job talking about the economic impact and the vibrancy that RH will bring. So I just wanted to kind of tie this into a more local perspective. I, you know, I, I grew up in a town in Southern California called Pacific Palisades, which I think shares a lot of the same charm and magic that I got introduced to when I joined Federal Realty eight years ago and got to start working on Old Town. It's been an absolute passion project for me. I've been intricately involved in every lease that we have signed and every new business that we've opened. I think the momentum, and credit to the community, your community has momentum. Retailers that historically haven't looked at Los Gatos because it wasn't one of the Big Four in the Bay Area, now all of a sudden, this idea of coming into, meeting people where they are at their homes and being in a vibrant, smaller community, that resonates with retailers. And the, each move we've done, whether it was in bringing in a great regional restaurant in Teleferic Barcelona, and partnering with Xavi, and bringing that to the community, and see what that did from a vibrancy perspective, or providing ice cream for the kids. Each move has been well-thought-out, and I'm happy to discuss any of them. RH, to me, is the crown jewel. What, what I think, I was so proud to be a part of this deal. It's one of the most exciting leases that I've worked on, and opportunities to partner with such a great team since I've been at Federal. So I'm a staunch supporter of this. I'm from the town. My mom owns a hair salon in Pacific Palisades. We moved from Ireland in 1981. My fabric is small businesses, and I think Jennifer said it best. The balance and how, what we've created here in Los Gatos, I think, is a great balance between small business, brands that will, that people know, and I just think the mix in Los Gatos today is better than it's ever been. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, and thank you. Question, so do you think this is more about welcoming a beautiful Restoration Hardware store in our downtown on University Avenue? Do you think it's about that? Or do you think we're really sort of having issues about the plan development, you know, the LHP, which was 30 years old and signed by the Planning Commission back then and the Town Council? So do you, and specifically in that plan development, which is Old Town?
Right.
Building E was specifically mentioned on how it should be maintained or changed. There were four items, very direct, very clear. And aside from what was said about the architecture, I think at that time, the townpeople that put that together, which was part of the Historic Preservation Committee, which I was part of actually, a lot of time and effort went into that from many members of the community. And so I'm wondering, so do you think this is not about not wanting Restoration Hardware here, a large store? It's that, like many of their stores in, like Chicago, they did a beautiful flagship store, a building of 1914. That was beautiful. So I'm wondering, what your thoughts are on that?
So I got up to speak about what I think it does for the community. Yes, there's, I know, I know the issue that went in front of the Historic Society was the storefront. I personally believe that what RH will do to that storefront will be magnificent. It's objective. Do you like the storefront? Do you, do you not? I know from my own experiences with my mom, when, when Rick Caruso came to the Palisades and built a new project, there was changes, and some people embraced them, others didn't. But eventually, over time, things, things evolve. I look at things on a case-by-case basis, and relative to this building and the facade that's there today, and what RH is going to do, and what it's going to bring to the community, for me, it's, my personal opinion is it's, it's, it's going to be magnificent, and it's going to look way better than what I see there today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the speaker? Thank you. Okay, the last speaker card I have is Michael Costigan.
Thank you to the Commissioner, Michael Costigan, 15930 Ros Ave. My wife is a native Los Gatan. We moved back here from San Francisco in 2020. I'm originally from Ireland, where we're too poor to have good architecture. When I look at that block, it reminds me of the buildings I grew up around, you know, built by engineers rather than architects. The only architecturally designed buildings we had were churches, which tended to be larger. And even though they were large, they could also be beautiful, and they could complement. So I'm not sure if we need to fetishize smaller storefronts. We can have big, large buildings that add beauty. As a former resident of San Francisco through more than 15 years, I saw a lot of vacant storefronts, and I see what happens when we leave storefronts vacant for, I didn't realize it was three years for Gap, but that's not good. It's not good for foot traffic. It's not good for vibrancy. I think a lot of the other speakers have spoken to that. You know, we, my son-in-law's town's Fusion, we go to the library regularly. We were bringing down the average age of Music in the Park by 20 years on Sunday. We want to be here in this town. We want to be spending our time here, and I think this is the type of development that will help, help that to happen. You know, we've eaten at RH in Napa. We've also, I've been into the RH store on North Santa Cruz, but it's too small, right? There's a lot of things you might want to buy in a house, and I would prefer a larger space. I have bought more things in our house, because it's a bigger floor plan. So, you know, you, people will go to larger malls, and they do go out of, out of Los Gatos, to San Jose, to these larger malls, where they can get access to a wider variety of, of objects and then see them in situ. And I think that's a consideration. Again, we shouldn't fetishize small in the case of this type of store. Having a bit more space to showcase more objects, both in the restaurant and in the gallery space, seems like, you know, a useful thing. And again, will drive more people to shop in Los Gatos rather than leaving Los Gatos. Will drive more people to eat in Los Gatos rather than leaving Los Gatos, because there's too many moms who want to have dinner together. So yeah, that's, that's, I think this is, you know, I spent the first six months or a year of living in Los Gatos, and people would say, do you like Los Gatos? And I say, I love Los Gatos, but I live in my house, which could be on the surface of the moon, because we're all stuck at home. Now that we're back, now that we're out of COVID, now that we're recovering as a town, I think this is, you know, only going to add to the momentum and drive more community. So I firmly recommend the project.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, I have no more speaker cards for anyone here in the chambers. Okay, there's one more.
Thank you. Planning Commissioner Jim Foley, it's been a while. Glad to be back in front of you. Just, I wanted to touch on a couple of things I heard Commissioner Burnett bring up, specifically regarding the PD that was done and kind of the architecture. I am a member of the chamber and on the chamber board, but I'm speaking right now just on behalf of a long-term family and stakeholder. We own the Lock &amp; Yada building in town. That's a historical building, and that's something I think we certainly need to protect. And there's a number of other historically designated buildings. This version of Old Town that we're looking at is important, but it was totally redone. And I think you all took great care in figuring out, like, what that was supposed to look like, and do your best to plan for the future, you know, by whatever that designated block, and trying to say, let's try to break up certain linear feet of storefront to look like X and Y. And I think it served its purpose for a long time. But when you have RH here, who's known for, like, worldwide design and everything else, I think we ought to put their trust in them. And I love the design that they came up with. I think it's a beautiful building, and I think it's going to update everything really nicely. So I heard what you said. I don't think it's a question of whether or not we're asking, do we want a bigger RH? Do we want the restaurant? What do we want? I think those questions were answered a long time ago with a lot of policy changes we made in and around town. So anyway, just wanted to kind of comment on that a little bit, that I think you guys do a really great job trying to keep up with everything. There are so many guiding documents, but, you know, we can't tackle them all at once. And so I think it's about time to maybe take a fresh look, and these are the right guys to do it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Okay, any more speakers in the, okay.
Hello, my name is Carol Custer, and I live here in town, and I love Los Gatos. I love spending time in downtown Los Gatos, and I very much support the Restoration Hardware I agree with the other reasons that people have articulated here tonight. I think Restoration Hardware, excuse me, is a stable, well-respected company, and their projects in other locations are very popular. It would definitely draw people to the downtown area, which in turn would support the smaller businesses surrounding the Restoration Hardware project. And it would encourage them to come to downtown Los Gatos instead of going elsewhere, like Santana Row. The design, in my opinion, is, sorry. The design, in my opinion, is beautiful and really thoughtfully done. I was here for the Historic Preservation Council meeting, and I personally think that there is appropriate variation in the facade of the Restoration Hardware design with the varying roof lines and the awning treatments. So from my, my impression is that it has that nice variance in the front, across the front. I also think the design is harmonious with the character of downtown Los Gatos and would elevate the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the speaker? Okay, are there any additional speaker cards that are coming forward? Any hands raised on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair. So if you'd like to speak and you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Is that? So now we will invite the applicant to come back up and make a closing, give a closing statement. You can come up to the microphone, and you will have an additional three minutes to speak, and then Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask some questions.
First, I'd like to just thank the members of the community that spoke out in support of our project. We greatly appreciate that. And just note, while I might have sounded a little harsh about the existing architecture, you know, we, we just would love to be here, and we will do something, I think, that will make the community proud. And, you know, we're also open to your feedback, so it's not that we're just black and white here, but just know, at our core, everything we do, it comes through a lens of architecture. We have a design ethos that's printed everywhere in our company, and we plan to be here for the distance. In the 25 years I've been here, I've never opened a store that I've closed. And we invest, I think, on average, three times more than any, than the next closest retail store. So we're prepared to make a meaningful investment. We, when you think about us as formula retail, I would also think of the, the point of view that we actually run three businesses in the building. It's, it is a full restaurant, open for lunch, brunch, and dinner. That's, it could be a separate, be seen as a separate business in this building. We also run a interior design business. We're the largest residential interior design company in the world today. So we, we, we not only are a retail home furnishing store, we're an interior design business store, and we have space allocated to that, presentation rooms, offices within the building, and so on and so forth. So it's not just one business or one company. It might be one brand, but there are three real businesses beautifully integrated into a singular building. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think we probably will have some questions for you, right? Yes. So if you can, yeah, we will have some questions. Okay, so do Commissioners have questions? Okay, Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, thank you. So I do appreciate that you changed the way the skylight is. You can't really see it now. There's just one area that, so I really appreciate you working on that. Second of all, I'd like to know the, the length of the building, the front of the whole facade from, from the, the other, the courtyard to Elm Street. Do you know the footage on it?
Give us 15 seconds, then we'll probably have it.
Okay, thank you.
You have it. Jordan, on yours?
And then your color of the plaster versus the stucco that's there now, which is, there's many colors of stucco, which I think gives the building a little more interest and variation. So, and I know yours is sort of, it's just one color for a very long distance. So I think that that's, that does give it a, the texture of it sort of more of a modern look, like the Stanford store, let's say.
Well, yeah, and I would say, you know, we're not using blown-on stucco or slapped-on stucco. We only use Venetian plaster. It is the most expensive, hand-troweled finish, which gives it a beautiful variation. which gives it a beautiful variation. And, you know, you'll see it, it's, it's like a work of art when you do Venetian plaster.
But it is one color. It's not?
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. Just like human beings are generally one color.
And it's a, it's a smooth quality, not like a rough texture like it is there now.
Yeah, it's a hand-troughed, smooth, smooth finish. Yeah. It's 131 feet, distance from one end to the other. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And broken up how many times? Five times? There's, yeah, there's five, five varying breaks within the building as it articulates in and out over that 131 feet.
Do you have any more questions? Okay. Anyone else have any questions? No? Are you sure? Okay, I have a couple of questions. So, will any, I'm looking at some of our, like, community design guidelines with regards to commercial, commercial design guidelines, I should say. There's a couple of things that I just wanted to ask about. I know that in this plan, you plan to, you know, change and then repair the sidewalk if needed for some of the architectural changes that you're planning on. Can you just, you're, right now, there is like some brick there. You will be planning on like replacing that or making sure that that fits seamlessly into the current situation?
Yeah, that we would
Okay.
upgrade everything that needs to be upgraded.
Okay, perfect. And then, as far as other pedestrian amenities, will you have anything, like any benches outside? Previously, Steamers was there, and they had, you know, obviously some outdoor seating for, for eating. But are you adding, are you planning on having any, you know, seats by your windows or anything for people to?
Yeah, well, I don't know. Did they have the renderings of the interior of restaurant?
Yeah.
You do? Okay, so the interior restaurant is basically like sitting outside?
Yes.
It's 365 days a year. So we have that. And then, and then on the corridor, we have benches and so on and so forth? Yeah. Yeah, we actually have outdoor furniture in that, the corridor between the two, two buildings. So our plan is to kind of use that as a promenade and try to upgrade it going all the way through?
Okay, great. That is, that's good to hear. And then, what about, there's a lot of very big, beautiful windows. Will any, like, what, at what level will those be oper, like, openable or not?
We, the tough thing about doing operable windows is two, two things. When you have a restaurant, it messes with the whole air extraction and for a kitchen and so on and so forth. And also can mess up your air conditioning system. So we will have two entrances into the gallery today, one on the side. Yeah, so we'll have two entrances. Those are operable, but currently, the other ones are not operable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, my last question is related to the outdoor dining. Obviously, it's, you know, a loss in the community to lose some outdoor dining space. I understand you design your dining to be like an outdoor experience, but can you kind of, maybe, did you think at all about trying to use some of the outdoor space for dining? Is that just?
You mean along the sidewalk, or?
Yeah.
Not really. I mean, we're trying to focus our investment and do something spectacular. And so, yeah, nothing really was considered along the sidewalk. Is that something that's really meaningful to the commission? I mean, I could look at adding some tables out there.
No, I mean, like, it is just, you know, out, one of the, it's encouraged, like, we appreciate, I mean, if you have been down to the space a lot, like, across the street, all of those outdoor areas. There's not a lot. We don't have a lot of outdoor dining space
Right.
in town. And we have beautiful weather, and people like to sit outside. The outdoor space was very much utilized for the previous restaurant. So I was just wondering if that was in, in any part of your plan, if you had a reason for not, for not doing it or doing it, but?
No, no. I mean, one of the reasons we started building restaurant pavilions with glass rooftops was to kind of give you the feeling that you're sitting outside, and you don't have to sit under an umbrella because we have UV-filtered glass. At first, everybody told me in the Napa Valley, when I was trying to build those buildings with the olive trees, that we'd never passed, what, Title 24, or, you know, the energy, because the sun was going to beat down on that building. And I almost gave up on that. And then I was in Las Vegas for the National Retail Real Estate Convention, and I walked at, I think it was 3:00 in the afternoon, I had to get something out of my room. And I walked up, and I realized it was 107 degrees in Las Vegas, and the sun was blasting in my room. And I realized there had to be glass that could kind of control temperature and control UV. And that's how we were able to figure out how to build a, a glass roof with olive trees in it, in the Napa Valley. So I think we give you the, the best of a kind of usable tables all year round. You're completely under sunlight. It's filtered, so hopefully it doesn't aggravate skin cancer or anything. And, and you, it's kind of at a 68 to 72 degrees setting. It's not fresh air, but closest thing to it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other question? Oh, Commissioner Sordi does have a question.
I did have one question, and thank you for clarifying the three businesses, because I was a little confused about that. Is there, I guess my question is, what are the operational hours of those three businesses? Has there overlap? Are there hours in which the restaurant's going to be open, and then other two businesses will be closed?
Sure, sometimes it depends. We, we kind of look at each, each of these locations on an individual basis. What, we, we know that the restaurant, we seat generally until, sometimes in the winter, 8 o'clock last seating, meaning we're open till about 9:30, 10, you know, that, before people are exiting. And, but most generally, summer hours are 9 o'clock last seating. And the, the gallery, because this is a central courtyard restaurant, the gallery will be open to be able to look through and shop around. We may not be fully functioning with interior designers and everything, because we'll operate the restaurant fully functioning and a semi-functioning gallery, if you will. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I, let's, we will now close the public portion of the public hearing on item two. And I invite commissioners to ask questions of staff, provide comments, and eventually, hopefully, propose a motion. Before we get, everyone gets started, I just do have a couple of questions for staff. I think would be helpful for everyone to understand before we start our discussion. So can someone please explain why this went to Historic Preservation Committee first, even though it's not a historic building, and what that means? Thank you.
So thank you for that question. So this property, including Old Town, is included in the University Edelen District, which is an adopted historic district that the council approved many years ago. As with any of our historic district, districts, there can be a number of newer buildings or residences in most contexts within the district. And while they're not old, they're not pre-1941, they support the district. So any exterior modifications to buildings or residences within a district needs a recommendation by the Historic Preservation Committee.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And then, we also, it really, can you just explain the purview of the Historic Preservation Committee, you know, what they're supposed to be looking at and making decisions about?
Yeah, and I touched on it in my presentation, but I can elaborate a little bit. There's three components to this application. There's the CUP, which we've been talking a little about, bit about tonight. And then there's the Architecture in Site application, which really deals with the exterior modifications to the resident, or to the, to the building. I'm used to dealing with residences. And the, the modification of the Plan Development. What, the Architecture in Site and Plan Development applications are tied together because the Plan Development dictates for this building that it, it's broken up to feel like multiple buildings. So the Historic Preservation Committee was looking at the exterior modifications, the design, and how it, its compatibility with Residential Design Guidelines and the, the historic district. They touch, because they're connected, they touched on the Plan Development Amendment as well.
Okay. And you said Residential Design Guidelines, but I think you meant Commercial.
Thank you for that clarification.
I know we're all used to doing more residential things. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. So then, a follow-up question to that related to the Plan Development Ordinance. Can you just explain what a Plan Development Ordinance is, and then what findings typically need to be made to modify one?
Sure. So a Plan Development Ordinance is an overlay that dictates additional, we call them performance standards, that govern beyond the base zoning designation. So while this property is located in the C2 district, which has its own set of zoning requirements and the Commercial Design Guidelines, this Plan Development allows for additional, sometimes allowances, so it could be taller buildings, it could be more floor area, or it could be really specific design, like we see in this case. The Plan Development findings, I'm not going to be able to rattle them off in real time. They're provided in your staff reports, as I search here.
Or, yeah, I mean, they're on page 33.
Thank you.
Yeah, of the staff report. I mean, mainly, it's about aligning with specific parts of the general plan.
Yeah, so there's general plan compliance that the other provisions of the town code, so we'll look at that from a technical standpoint, and that the proposed, include, the amendment includes development standards or uses that deviate from the underlying zoning. And, and so the findings, as included in Exhibit 2, are articulated the way that staff thinks they can be achieved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before I open up for more questions to staff, I do just want to say that as a planning commission, for those of you that are new here, this is your first time, as a planning commission, we are required to, essentially, our job is to look at our town rules that we have set up, our ordinances, our general plan, and make decisions based on what exists in those documents. So all of us could sit up here and think that this building is the most beautiful thing that's ever going to come to town, but we have to scrutinize, and we have to make sure that it aligns with all of our town guidelines. Essentially, that's our job. So that's really our job here tonight. And as Mr. Mullen and Mr. Paulson both said, there's kind of two separate parts that I think that we should kind of talk about. And one is the, the PD ordinance, possible change in this Architecture in Site, and then separately, the CUP. We can do it in either order, but that's my recommendation, just because I think that, you know, they're, they're separate things, and we've done that before in the past. So, that being said, I would like to open it up to questions from other people. Yes, Commissioner Burnett, and then Burnett.
Question for staff. To me, the crux of this hearing seems to be about the PD Ordinance 2025, specifically requiring for Building E to have, it appear as a collection of individual structures that abut each other. I'm just curious if there's any historic knowledge we have about where that came from?
Surprisingly, that even precedes me. So I do not have any of that historic knowledge. But ultimately, you know, when the Plan Development comes through, and I think Commissioner Burnett mentioned that, you know, when that PD was coming through, HPC had some input, Planning Commission had some input, and ultimately, council makes the final decision. But I think, you know, ultimately, the Planning Commission tonight's going to be making a recommendation on all three of these applications, which will then go on to the Town Council for consideration.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, question for staff. I actually wanted you just to go over the, the four areas that Building E was commented on in the Ordinance 2025. And as I recall, when this Plan Development was done, it was to keep in tune with the way Las Gatos has been laid out, Old Town, well, the town itself. Many small stores, individual shops, a lot of articulation, a lot of movement. So that's sort of the idea, the plan that was behind developing this Plan Development 30 years ago. And Building E, which is Steamers, was specifically, you know, there were four directions given specifically for that building in the site and architecture. So Sean, would you mind just reading those four?
Yeah, so thank you for that question. So Performance Standard 15 included in the governing ordinance would, talked about opening up the center pathway. There was design, the structure, this is all relative to Building E, design the structure so it appears to be a collective of individual structures that abut each other, that the roof design shall be reflective of the individual structures, in other words, break up the roof lines. The corner tower shall be redesigned into a clipped corner design, and lastly, provide more variety in the buildings.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other questions for staff? Commissioner Rasby? Do you have, okay.
Thank you, Chair. I have no questions, but if you want, I can kind of begin our discussion. You wanted to break it up in two parts, correct?
Yeah, do we want to do the CUP? Oh, Commissioner Sordi?
Sorry, just following on the historic discussion, I wanted to understand a little bit more about the nature of a non-participating structure versus participating. And if, for example, we had a participating structure that qualified, what type of, if it's not opening canors, like succinctly, what kind of, would it be a different set of design guidelines that would apply to a participating structure versus none?
Thank you for that question. So the, the guidelines make a distinction between contributing and non-contributing structures. This would be considered non-contributing since it's not old. The modifications that can be made to a contributing structure, I wouldn't say that they're limited, but they're guided more strongly through the guidelines. Whereas a newer structure or non-contributing structure, the guidelines would reinforce that these modifications should further support the district. So when we typically look at residences, it's about taking something that may not be as ornate in the Almond Grove and improving it to getting closer to a contributing status and further enhancing the Almond Grove in that scenario. So that, that's what we'd look at for this as a non-contributing structure, is if any changes are going to be made, how does it continue to support the character and strengthen the cohesiveness of that district?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rasby, did you want to start it off?
Sure. So I have some notes here in kind of no discernible order. And it occurs to me that perhaps I should have started this night with a, a disclosure in that my house is stuffed full of RH furniture. But notwithstanding that, I believe I can sit here and judge this in a, in a neutral fashion. So the three asks for us tonight are the modification of the PDO, the Architecture in Site application, which includes the exterior modifications, and the CUP to allow retail greater than 10,000 square feet with the restaurant. So turning first to the two first components, that is, that is the PDO and the Architecture in Site applications. Really, I think there are three or four changes to the PDO, depending on how we look at it. And largely, it's to break up the facade, or to allow the facade to be non-broken up. It's, under the current ordinance, it's required to appear to be separate storefronts. And the change requires us to allow it to be one. I suspect back in the day, we don't have the historical evidence, but this was probably done, I think, to preclude the use of big-box stores in Las Gatos. And we've done that, I think, successfully. If that is what this ordinance was intended to do, I think we are not harming ourselves and by modifying this ordinance to allow Restoration Hardware. The modified design really does create a articulated storefront. It allows step backs on the ground floor. There are alternating fenestrations. It's got a varied roof line. There are deeply recessed windows. And then there are awnings. So I think those changes will help articulate the frontage to this store, which will preclude what I think our forefathers were trying to preclude. That is a single, flat-faced surface facing University Avenue. So I would be in favor of modding, modifying the Plan Development Ordinance. As for the Architecture in Site application, again, I find that the design is, I think, very attractive. It's, to the extent it's in a, in a historic district, It's, to the extent it's in a historic district, not itself a historic building, it does contain a cohesive Mediterranean design, which I think complements Old Town across the way. And I'll note for the record that the overall height of the building is reduced from 27 feet 4 inches to 26 feet 8 inches. And by the way, this is in a area where 45 feet is allowed. And so, in a time when I know this town is very concerned about some of our building heights, this is a building which could have gone higher, and they've elected not to. We're not asking for, or the applicant's not asking for any new parking, and there is some minor tree removal, but I think that's handled well. And so, without turning to the CUP, I'll reserve those comments until later, my view is with respect to the PDO and the architecture and site application, that these are, this is a thoughtful design. I think it protects our historic area and our downtown, and would be a good add, so I would support it as currently presented. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, so in response to Commissioner Rasby, I would have to say that the present building there has many colors of stucco, with one entire storefront in brick, breaking up the textures. There are wonderful, unique and roof designs, unique roof designs, and heights reflected of the different stores that was requested in the PD, versus a long, flat roof with the same parapet across. The applicant's design is homogeneous, it's one color, 131 feet or whatever, exactly not what the plan development ordinance had in mind. The present building has belly bands, it has waincoats, it has different parapets, it has small windows before, below the roof line, it has decorative elements, it has brackets, it has corbels, it has eaves, it has bases. The applicant's building has limited variation. There are no metal glass canopies in Building E, which the applicant's building has metal glass canopies. The present building has canvas awnings. I think that's, that's a big one. The applicant wants the facade to be symmetrical, cohesive, which was said over and over again, massing mirror images versus asymmetrical, creating visual interest, conveying movement and dynamism, dynamism, contributing with the cooler stability of symmetry. So I think there are a lot of differences, and I think as, as, let's see, Mr. Foley said, these guys can do anything. We're not saying we don't want wonderful restoration hardware, we're just saying we need something a little different, something a little more like you've done to other buildings all over the place. A little more personality, a little, a little more charm, I think, my estimation. So, those are my feelings, but, and to asking us to change an ordinance that's been around for 30 years, a plan development that a lot of effort went into from the townspeople at that time, I think it's a lot to ask for myself. Thank you.
Commissioner Sordi?
Yeah, so just to address the PD ordinance, I should mention that I'm a city planner in my day job. And the one thing I love about PD ordinances is you can change them. You can change them a little bit easier than you can change an entire zoning designation, for example. And they're intended to be tailor-fit for the properties, and I think that this isn't all just about design. I mean, a lot of the comments we heard and a lot of considerations, I think, that we need to apply to this property are market-driven. We're dealing with a site that's now been vacant, at least the gap portion for going on three years. And so, you know, obviously, well, it's not just a design-driven discussion, we have to take in the totality of all these issues, like we make our decision, and I think that the market supports a fresh look at this, and we have the opportunity here to make a big change with the PD ordinance, and I think we should.
Well, I had a couple of comments. I agree with my fellow commissioners, Sordi and Rasby. One thing, well, to me, I respect the detail that Commissioner Burnett mentioned about the differentiation of the existing buildings in terms of articulation and whatnot. But to me, just looking at the building, I don't think it's convincing that there's separate buildings. And I look across at Old Town, the shopping center, there is articulation there, but I look at other buildings downtown and I see, well, Mr. Foley mentioned the Cundiyata Building, except for the turret on the corner, it's a pretty rectangular building, linear building. And the same thing is true of like, the Purple Onion Building, except for the corner, which is cut out. So I don't find it incompatible with the existing historic structures downtown, and I certainly agree that it's a beautiful plan that has tremendous amount of consideration that went into it, obviously, and attractive building that would be inviting to customers, as was mentioned. And I think the, it's important for us to keep in mind the general plan goals relating to economic vibrance and vitality and creating a community. So I, and I'll certainly agree with Commissioner Rasby and Commissioner Sordi that this makes a lot of sense for the town.
Okay, I want to echo my fellow commissioners' comments. I agree that, well, I first also want to say that I sit on the Historic Preservation Committee, and I was, I joined that committee in between the two meeting, initial meetings for this. And I agree that the current building, proposed building structure does not comply with the PD ordinance. However, I also agree with my fellow commissioners that I don't have a problem changing it based on really looking closely at our commercial design guidelines and looking at our land use element and our community design elements of our general plan. So, that being said, I think that there's a couple of key parts that can, you know, that, one part in our community design guideline, or not in our community design guidelines, in our commercial design guidelines, it does, you know, there is a goal or whatnot that says break larger facades into smaller segments, but I read through the entire thing, and that was the only aspect that this, like, conflicted with. And I do think that it does break it into smaller segments with some of the articulation, even though it is going to be, all the windows will be relatively consistent and the material will be consistent. I understand that is slightly, a slight conflict, but I also found many aspects that this building improves, including like, larger windows and high transparency of windows, high-quality storefront materials, access to pedestrians, prioritizing pedestrians, adding seats and opportunities for pedestrians to gather outside, in addition to many other things. So, from that perspective, with, from our commercial design guidelines and what my other commissioners have said, I also support changing the plan development ordinance because I do believe that it is not necessarily serving the purpose that it once did in the late 90s. It's, in order to make the findings for amending this plan development, we also need to make sure that it complies with the, you know, land use part of our general plan, specifically 1.4, which states, let me find it, which states that infill projects shall be designed in context with the neighborhood and surrounding zoning with respect to the existing scale and character of surrounding structures, and should blend rather than compete with the established character of the area. And I do really think that across the street, when you look at the original Old Town, that is a one large building, and I think that this will add, when this building was originally built at the time, in the night, in the late 90s, or whenever it was finished, I don't know. Anyway, it was nice, but it looks dated at this point, and I don't think that it looks as, it doesn't tie in as much with the historic aspect of the town as the rest of Old Town does at this point. So those are kind of a few of the reasons that, the findings, I feel like that I could make. In addition, with the aspects for the community design guidelines, the, it specifically says that development on all elevation shall be high-quality design and construction, a positive addition to, and compatible with the town's ambiance. Development shall enhance the character and unique identity of existing commercial and/or residential neighborhoods. That's policy CD 1.4, and I really believe that this proposed project does that. So with those aspects being said, I am in support of making a recommendation to Town Council to approve the amend, amending of the plan development and the architecture and site application aspect of this. I am, obviously, we are not going to have a motion or whatnot now, and we do also need to discuss the CUP, but Commissioner Burnett, do you have additional?
I have a question for the Chair. You brought up outside seating, dining, I don't know where that ended, because I know Steamers now has that outside in the courtyard there, and I don't know what the final outcome was that. I think it would be a nice thing to add on if it's going to be forwarded to the Town Council.
Okay, I would, I think that that would be nice if, I agree, the more outside space that people can use, the better. I was just referring to the part of our commercial design guidelines that talked about like benches and places for seating outs, like, not for food service or things, but, but I do agree that if that is something, I wouldn't want to make any conditions that, of, you know, approval based on that, but if there's any opportunity for additional outdoor space, but it sounds like they're planning on using the passageway with outdoor furniture and everything, so that would be nice. Any other comments? Yeah.
A question for staff. Since this PD ordinance 2025 specifically related to Building E, are there other ordinances for non-contributing commercial buildings that also would be affected by the concept of separate buildings? It's not a very articulated question, but well-articulated. Is that enough to answer, or I can try again?
Thank you for that question, I can, I can try. So that, the existing PD ordinance talks about a lot of things, but that performance standard is specific to Building E. So everything else in the PD, existing PD ordinance would be carried forward. The draft ordinance in front of you this evening would just eliminate Performance Standards 15, B, C, and D, which relate to breaking it up. B and C really relate to breaking up into individual structures, and D talks about changing the massing on the corner, which was already achieved because that's how it's built, so that it's, its, its purpose has been served.
I think that responds to my question, thank you.
Do we want to discuss the CUP, or do you have additional comments?
No, if you like, I can begin that discussion as well. No additional comments on the other.
Yeah, okay.
So on the CUP, again, according to my notes, I think we, as a commission, have to make four findings. That is, that the CUP is essential to the public convenience and welfare, that it doesn't impair the existing use in the zone, that it's not detrimental to the public health or welfare, and that it is in harmony with the general plan. And I think, based upon the, just even the comments we've received tonight from the public, I think it's clear that this facility, including the restaurant, especially the restaurant, perhaps, is going to be a large add to the public convenience and welfare of Los Gatos. It's going to create a destination for eating, for shopping, create foot traffic. I think overall, it's clear that the project is in compliance with the general plan, it's in compliance with the commercial design guidelines, zoning requirements, height, parking, et cetera. We've noticed strong public support, including the Chamber of Commerce noting, again, the strong revenue that's derived just from the restaurant component of restoration hardware alone. And frankly, it seems to me that the project is, as noted, a lift for Los Gatos. It really does show who we are, puts us higher up on the map. And so for all those reasons, I think the creation of the CUP to allow the retail in greater of 10,000 square feet, and a restaurant which is serving alcohol, should be part of our recommendation to town. Thank you.
I have a question for staff about some other CUPS in this area. Do you know what the time, do we have any idea of what the business hours are for maybe some of the restaurants across the street, if they are under that, or what Steamers had before?
I don't have that information ready, but I can pull some of it in the next few minutes, if you want to return.
I mean, would that impact any of our decision-making, or do we feel like we've seen enough CUPS that we're comfortable with hours?
I can only speak personally, and it seems to me that the hours proposed comports with what I would want to make seen in town, and especially if we're going to cast ourselves as a sophisticated, upscale destination location, these are the hours, I think, that would be appropriate for that kind of destination.
Yeah, and from, I mean, you don't have to look that up, Mr. Mullen. I think from my perspective also, we, sitting on the commission now for a while, this is in line with other CUPS in the area that we have seen, so I'm not concerned with that. Commissioner Burnett?
One small point to add is that we haven't seen any opposition to this application whatsoever from the public. You know, it's been widely advertised. The staff report and the public comment has been available for review by members of the public, and I think it's telling that there's been no opposition.
Does anyone want to maybe try for a motion, or?
I can try, Chair, if you'd like. All right. One second. Yeah, let me, yeah, for staff, how would you like it? I'm not sure we are in consensus on all three points. Do you want one motion with, for all three points? How would you like that?
It sounds like there might be consensus on the CUP, but not on the plan development and the architectural insight, and so maybe you could do two votes, one on each.
Very good. I will then create two motions. First, move to forward a recommendation of approval to Town Council to modify the plan development ordinance 2025 to allow modifications to existing Building E, as well as an architecture and site application for exterior modifications to an existing commercial building in the University Edelson Historic District. For property zoned C2LHPD located at 31 University Avenue, APN 529-02-044, planned development modification application PD-25-001, architecture and site application S-25-004. The project is categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15301. I can make the required findings that the proposed amendment, oh, that I can make the proposed findings that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, that pursuant to Section 29-0.80.095 of Town Code, the proposed PD amendment is consistent with Chapter 29, Article 8, Division 2 of the Town Code. If the proposed PD amendment is in conformance of the goals, policies, and applicable land use designations and standards of the town's general plan, the proposed PD amendment is in conformance with all applicable provisions of the Town Code, including Town Council adopted guidelines, that the proposed amendment includes development standards for uses that deviate from the underlying zone in a way that results in innovative site planning and provides public benefit to the citizens of the town by providing additional dining opportunities, availability of goods and services, and tax revenue. Staff, is that an adequate motion?
And did you want to consider the architectural and site application with this vote?
And with respect to the, yes, with respect to the architectural and site application? Let's see.
We don't have findings for that, we have considerations.
Okay, how about, I will just include the considerations. Okay, how about, I will just include the considerations as provided in staff report. One question for my fellow commissioners before, either, did we want to include a side recommendation of outdoor seating?
It sounds like they already have that in the plans, but...
Okay, then no further modifications to the motion.
Or someone has second?
Second.
Commissioner Sordi, thank you. Discussion before I call the question, all those in favor of the current motion, raise your hand. The motion passes four to one. Okay, and then a second motion for the CUP, do you want to go again? Okay.
I move to forward approval to Town Council to approve the conditional use permit for formula retail over 10,000 square feet and for a restaurant with alcohol service on property zoned C-2LHPPD located at 31 University Avenue, APN 529-02-044. Conditional use permit application U-25-001. I can make the findings, if the proposed uses of the property are essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, that the proposed uses will not impair the integrity and character of the zone, since it is a commercial use located in a commercial zone, that the proposed uses would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare, and that the proposed uses of the property are in harmony with the various elements or objectives of the general plan. Oh, I can also make the further findings as required by Section 29.20.19-B of the Town Code, that the proposed use of the property is in harmony with specific provisions or objectives of the general plan, that the proposed use will not detract from the existing balance and diversity of business in the commercial district, that the proposed use would not create an overconcentration of similar types of businesses, and that the proposed use will not detract from existing land use mix and high urban design standards.
And is there a second? Commissioner Barnett?
Second motion?
Thank you. And discussion, is that, are we good on the, okay, perfect. I'll call the question, all those in favor, please raise your hand, and the motion passes unanimously. So I believe we are done with this because it's a recommendation, there are no appeal rights.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to our report from the Community Development Director, Mr. Paulson, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Chair. The only thing this evening is, last week, the council considered the appeal for 10 Charles Street for the fence height exception, and that appeal was denied. They're out there cutting down the portions in the View Triangle to three feet, as of this morning, at least when I was coming in, and then we're going to work with them on what options they have for the remainder that's down Charles Street.
Thank you. In addition to our service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees, including the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, the General Plan Committee, and the Historic Preservation Committee. HPC met today. Commissioner Burnett, do you want to provide a report, or do you want me to? I can also. We had, we had five items that we had public hearings for. The first was a request for approval to construct exterior alterations to a home on Broadway, and we decided, what did we do for that one? Oh, yes, this was their second, right, they had come back to us and we approved, they made some modifications, and it was great, so hopefully we don't ever hear from that again. Okay, the next one was constructing exterior alterations on Magnuson Loop for window replacement. We approved that with some modifications to what the applicant was asking for in hopes to streamline the process and just maintain the integrity of the home. And then we also had a house on Pleasant Street that we were, a split decision on to remove from the historic resources inventory, so an automatic recommendation of denial will be forwarded for that. There was also a house on Los Cadas Boulevard and on Bachman that were, two houses that were looking for some preliminary review to construct a second story addition and another separate addition on Bachman, and both, we had good discussions and are looking forward to those actual applications when they come before the town. Are there any other subcommittee updates, reports? Okay. Thank you, staff, commissioners in the public, for your participation. There be no further business of the commission, this meeting is adjourned.